I'm here.
And I'll make note that Supervisor Starkey is absent.
You, at this time, would you please take a brief moment of reflection? If you'd join me in the Pledge of Legions. Ready?
Yeah. Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States, to the Republic, a nation.
Introduction of new employees? Do you have any new employees?
Yes, Chair, we have one today from the Department of Health and Human Services.
Hi, Board, Paula Henry, Department of Health and Human Services. This is our new employee, Melissa Cool. She comes to us as a caregiver and she's starting a benefit issuance.
Hi, I'm Melissa and I'm very much looking forward to my new job with the county.
Very welcome. Okay, that's all. Counsel, anything to report at a closed session?
No, Chair.
Okay. At this time, the Chair requests any deletions, corrections, or additions from the Board members to the agenda at this time. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Seeing none, we'll move on to brief reports and announcements. Supervisor Howard, would you, if you have anything, would you lead us off?
Thank you, Chair. We're the California Department of Transportation. Also had several discussions about a recent stock assessment for the Quillback Rockfish that has kept this board active now for the last couple of years and trying to get our fishing areas, specifically 20 fathoms to 50 fathoms reopened. It's my understanding today that a representative from the local fishing community will be here during public comment. So I won't steal their thunder and leave that report out to them. Attended a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Also had a long discussion in preparation for a trip I'm going to make back to Pennsylvania and Washington DC to discuss Last Chance Grade with Jamie Mattioli. Caltrans feels very strongly, even though we're a few years out, that we should start lobbying very hard for federal funds for Last Chance Grade. So that was a focus to make sure I have everything in the quiver when I go back to talk to a bunch of greenies on this subject. And greenies, I don't mean people that hug trees. I mean people that just really don't know us anymore because the entire administration has changed in DC. Also, had a lot of conversation about the increased traffic. We're having a successful tourism season, but what it means for residents of Douglas Park is a nightmare. Douglas Park is specifically towards the end where it enters the park itself. It's a very narrow location, no shoulders, and residential housing and children playing in the street. And when you introduce well over a million people for a short window of time, congestion, speeding become extreme issues within the area. So trying to find some solutions to help them out is where we're looking at with the Community Development Department and roads. Also attended a California State Association meeting of the Tribal Working Group. Tribal issues in particular becoming more and more prolific throughout the state of California as it relates to fee-to-trust issues or impacts with public trust law like PL 280. On the agenda was a discussion of PL 280 and those responsibilities that we as state of California, we as counties deliver to tribes. Also had a short caucus briefing from the California State Association of Counties for the upcoming Philadelphia trip. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard?
Supervisor Wilson? Thank you. What we have is for, since the last board meeting, I attended the... I met with James Gores Supervisor. He is, came up to Delmar County to talk about what issues we have here in Delmar County. Had a good discussion with him. He is running for, be in the next governor's race. And Senate race, I'm sorry, Senator race. And so, yeah, he's very interested in carrying on these conversations and continuing to find out what the rural counties need. He comes from a rural county and so he understands the benefits and the differences and the desire that our voice be heard in the Senate. Attended the Solid Waste Management meeting. Nothing really to report after that. We, I did the Partnership TAC meeting, which basically discusses different partnerships that we have outside of, with the county, both state, federal, and tribal, local. And so we discussed the processes by which we want to see these partnership engagements. And many of them unfortunately have fallen off on a consistent basis, but we're going to try to hopefully reestablish some kind of standard of contact so that we can understand the goals and objectives of each of our partners and hopefully bring it in together. Had the homeless TAC meeting yesterday discussing where we are, both with the shelter development and location of the homeless shelter, where we are with the legacy. Those have all been converted into living accommodations now. And there's 27 rooms, I believe, currently being occupied. Two that are being renovated. They need to be, the tenants have gone out, but they need to be made ready for new tenants. So that process is going to be ongoing, unfortunately expensive. But as we go forward, we'll be hopefully opening up services this year with the shelter. And we'll see how it goes as we develop the pallet home area and we're moving forward. And that ends my report, thank you.
Thanks Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Short?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended some of the same meetings as my colleagues, so I won't belabor those points. In addition to those, I did attend a special meeting of Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, where we talked about recruitment for our airport director and how to proceed with that. Other than that, I've got nothing more to report. Thank you.
Thanks Supervisor Short. And with mine, I'm just going to give a quick shout out to the Road Department. They invited me out to one of their projects they were working on on Lakeview, which I highly recommend everybody take a drive out there. They paved, overlaid the entire thing, both sides. Did an amazing job, it was really neat to see the process and having everybody involved, the whole crew. They even brought the office out to do the flagging. I was thoroughly impressed, so it was really nice to see some major improvements and highly recommend you go and look on Lakeview. So thank you to the Road Department. And with that, I'm going to move on to consent agenda. So I will open it up for public comment on consent agenda items, if we have any out there. Are you coming up for consent or just your water bottle? Okay. Then I will close public comments on consent agenda and I'll bring it back to the Board for any questions, comments?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Kylie?
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Borges?
Yes.
Okay. Just going to keep moving right on down to item number 24. General Government authorize and direct staff to process the Title III funding application submitted by the Delmar County Sheriff's on behalf of Search and Rescue Unit in the amount of $99,485 for equipment procurement and training to support search and rescue personnel for deployments within the national forests and federal managed land in Delmar County as requested by the Director of Community Development. I will open this up for public comment on item 24. Seeing none, we're going to close it.
I've moved to approve.
One second. Hey, we have a motion, a second, or further discussion?
No, other than to say, this has always been a struggle for search and rescue, getting the adequate amount of funding. For so many years, it's been like 10,000, 15,000 a year out of the sheriff's budget for search and rescue. And that doesn't go a long way, replaces ropes, does a few things in their training process. But to have, you know, them get this into their budget, to be able to get the equipment, get the services, get the training, and do the repairs to their existing equipment that they need to do is going to be a godsend for them. And I really appreciate it being done this year for search and rescue. The dedication, the time, the energy, the effort that these people volunteer and put in has been extraordinary and the life-saving measures that they have taken and the lives that they have saved out there has been a blessing to us in this community. And it's a dedication of a lot of people over a lot of years that have done some amazing work for Delmar County and I appreciate each and every one of them.
Okay, with that, anything else to add? We have a motion, we have a second. Kylie?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Borges?
Yes.
We are moving right along. We're going to go down to budget transfers. I'll read these into the record. Item number 25, approve and adopt budget transfer 05-07 in the amount of $360 from the budget, Building Maintenance and Parks budget to cover unexpected key deposit refunds as requested by the Director of Building Maintenance and Parks. Number 26, approve and adopt budget transfer 06-01 in the amount of $6,000 from the contingency fund to augment the Pacific Shore Settlement budget to fund the utilities of the host station located at Pacific Shores as requested by the Director of Building Maintenance and Parks. Number 27, approve and adopt budget transfers 06-03 in the amount of $6,000 to augment the Pacific Shore Settlement budget to fund the utilities of the host station located at Pacific Shores as requested by the Director of Building and Maintenance and Parks.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
One second. Motion and a second, any comments on budget transfers? Okay, seeing none. Kylie?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Borges?
Yes.
Moving down, legislative and budget issues. Number 28, receive and review the Measure R Oversight and Advisory Committee's Fiscal Year 2024/2025 Annual Report pursuant to Resolution Number 2023-036, Section 7, and K, as approved by the committee on June 12th, 2025, and as presented herein. Public comment on item 28? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to the Board, questions, comments? Nothing at all? Neil, anything to add to it?
I'm just here to answer any questions. This is part of the resolution as you read out in the agenda item and the action item. And basically what happens annually is each of the departments that receive any kind of Measure R funding provide reports each year to the committee in which they develop their report annually to the Board and report out at the recommended budget.
Okay, that'll entertain a motion. Wait, we don't need it, we just received it and reviewed it. Okay. Number 29, approve Measure R funding requests as submitted by eligible Measure R departments and as reviewed and recommended by the Measure R Oversight and Advisory Committee pursuant to Resolution 2023-036, Section 7, and, Section 7, E, F, and G. And number two, direct any department that receives Measure R funding to clearly identify whenever possible that the purchase was made with Measure R funding as recommended by the committee and as presented by the county administrative officer. Any public comment on number 29? Okay, close public comment, back to the Board.
I'm just really happy, Chair, to see the focus here around our law enforcement, specifically probation, jail, and the sheriff's office. So I know that's when we took this measure into consideration. It got put on the ballot and voted for. This is a huge part of the focus of Measure R, so I'm happy to see the committee bringing these recommendations to the Board. And with that, I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you Supervisor Howard?
I will second.
Supervisor Short? Anything else to add? Nope, Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Borges?
A yes. Okay. Go on to item number 30, bear with me here, I have to read it all in. Number one, discuss and take action as necessary to approve the 2025-2026 Fiscal Year's Recommended Budget as presented by the CAO and Autorator Control's Office. Number two, approve attached position listing for establishing, eliminating, and reclassifying positions and authorizing human resources to revise the county staffing chart. Salary schedules and classification descriptions where applicable and complete other administrative tasks as necessary as requested by CAO, Autorator Controller, or Human Resource Director. Number three, approve the use of county general funds for the operational budget of the Local Fish and Game Commission as requested by the Autorator Controller and the County Administrative Officer. Number four, approve the use of county funds for the annual cost of operations at the Pacific Shores Watch Station as previously recommended by the Natural Resource Environmental Coordination Technical Advisory Committee and as requested by the Autorator Controller and the County Administrative Officer. Number five, direct the budget team to continue to review and analyze each department budget to identify all available expenditure saving options and to realize all revenue available. Number six, direct departments that no fixed asset purchase other than those approved with the recommended budget shall be allowed prior to the adopted budget without Board of Supervisor approval. Number seven, direct departments that no fiscal year 2024-2025 budget transfers will be allowed, transferring funds from salaries and benefits to any other category unless determined to be an expenditure necessary for operations by the CAO and Autorator Controller. And number eight, accept the recommended children's budget as presented in Attachment B. Okay. Any public comment on item 30, on either one through seven of item 30?
Norma Williams, Chapter President, DNCEA, SEIU 1021. In regards to Attachment A, the union did review that as presented to us by the CAO last week. We did have, obviously for the employees who are hearing, we did have some definite questions regarding it. As we always do, we do review Attachment A with a fine-tooth comb, ask pertinent questions regarding the justification for everything relating to SEIU. And after consideration of what the county presents, we review that information and then let them know whether we approve or still have remaining issues. As a result, we did have one issue, but we were able to quickly resolve that with the county team last week. And as a result, we were able to approve Attachment A. As a result of everything else relating into, in the regards to this recommended budget, we understand that it is a balanced budget. However, it is obvious with a caveat when it comes to salaries and benefits that is also basically taking into consideration waiting for the outcome of the Gallagher Report, which we did, the union did receive the preliminary data on that report in relations to compensation and benefits. We spent $128,000 on that. Okay. We are definitely going to be reviewing the data that we did receive. We do have, we are already finding some issues and concerns that we have with that. And so we will be eventually addressing those, if not before we start negotiations later next month at the time that we do start negotiations in July. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Oh, this is public comment?
On number 30?
Oh.
All right, we're not there yet. No other public comments? Okay. Bring it back to the Board, the discussion?
Nothing, other than I just want to, these preliminary budgets, when they do come through, this is just the first step in a long process of finalizing the final budget. But it is necessary at this point in time for us to do this so that we can continue on paying our bills and doing the things we need to do until the state resolves their budget and we get our finalized budget put together for the final year. And so this is the initial step. Most of the expenses that exist in this, because the largest portion of much of our expenditures comes from personnel, and those are fluid at this point in time and just to a solid degree because we are looking at still contracts that are in negotiation. So those figures are going to change, but this allows us to continue the business of doing business as a county until the finalized budget. Appreciate it.
Thanks Supervisor Wilson. With that, I'll make a motion to approve as read into the record.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Kylie?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Borges?
Yes.
Item number 31. Consider and re, consider review and approve the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 Border Coast Regional Airport Authority budget as requested by the Airport Program Fiscal Manager. Any public comment on item 31? Okay, bring it back to the Board for any possible discussion? Move to approve.
Second.
I feel like I'm really missing something here.
We gotta slow down or something.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we did public comment. Kylie?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Borges?
A yes.
Well, that leaves us with our remaining item number 23, which is a scheduled item. And we are ahead of schedule. That's the general public comment for the 10:25. What's that? Okay, I guess we'll take a three-minute break and we'll come back at 10:25 when a timed item comes.
Smoke them if you got them.
See you at 10:25. Our 10:25 timed item, which is the public comment period. Members of the public may address the Board on matters which are within this jurisdiction of the Board. If you are addressing the Board regarding the matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the Board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less.
I could have used those three minutes instead of going on break. But, um, so I want to submit this report. This has been really important. I have submitted back in December a request to get put on the agenda, but it was ignored. So because of that and because this is such an important topic, I'm asking that you waive the three minutes. There's no possible way I can do this in three minutes, you guys, so. And I'm going to try to abbreviate as much as possible, but this is like a really big deal that's been going on. It's regarding the historical poisoning that's occurred in the Smith River area from the pesticides and the inputs that are used that end up contaminating our waterways. Most people understand that because this is a temperate rainforest and we have so much water, it's not possible to hold that water back. And the sediment is contaminated from copper. And the reason why is because copper isn't like the other pesticides that are compounds that have half-life that does, that eventually break down. They actually accumulate in the soil. And the copper is incredibly toxic to salmonids especially. And their salmonids are bioindicator species. So, so that's kind of like, in a nutshell. So I am submitting this report to inform the Board and the public in order, oh, this is Alicia Williams, by the way. I'm submitting this report to inform the Board and the public in order to ensure that all county supervisors lend their support for the protection of public health, environmental health, and to mitigate further harms to our shared, to our shared habitat, local economy, and culture as a result of this persistent use of unsustainable ag practices by Easter lily growers in Smith River. More, multiple, so in addition to me trying to get on the agenda, I have had multiple attempts before you guys in public comment to speak about this and try to get appropriate action, but that hasn't happened. And then last fall, Supervisor Starkey, which is not here today, she did direct both the County Ag Commissioner, Justin Riggs, and Deputy Director of Public Health, Janelle Openchain, to investigate and bring back reports in response to that public outcry that we had on October 22nd. If anybody was not there, you can look on YouTube for the Delmar County website and you'll see the recording for October 22nd. But we have not had a report in those eight months from either of those people. I've been investigating it since I learned about it on October 21st. And so on behalf of our community and all who do not have a voice, I'm asking that you please direct and support our Ag Commissioner, Justin Riggs, to follow food and ag code and all other applicable laws, including conducting a comprehensive evaluation of all factors and adverse impacts resulting from his permitting of the restricted use pesticides that are used by the Easter lily growers. Please support him to deny requests to use restricted pesticides, fungicides, herbicides, et cetera, in the Smith River, including copper, due to the overwhelming grave harms that they cause. On Friday, the 13th, I did send the request based on Food and Ag Code Section 14009A. One second.
One second, hang on, Alicia.
Which allow, I'll finish right after this.
I know, hang on, I'm just going to, since it was a short meeting, I'll give you another minute. If you're okay with that, if you can wrap it up in that, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, I'm trying. So under this Food and Ag Code Section 14009A, any interested person can request reconsideration and a revocation of all restricted use permits. So that's what the context is and for what I'm saying. So I did already submit that, he did acknowledge receipt. But the important part is that you guys support him to actually follow the law and do this comprehensive evaluation, which is what he's supposed to be doing every single time. So there's multiple laws around restricted use permits, because they are so deadly, that have not been done. And there is a bunch of documentation that shows that. And we've got so much adverse impacts to human health through 13D. I just want to tell you guys about 13D. Actually have it abbreviated in this. It's, for one thing, it's banned in 34 countries. And the reason why is because it's so deadly to human health. It also moves through the environment and causes all kinds of damage through the environment. There's also other things that are incredibly damaging that are being used. There's five restricted use pesticides that are being used and all five of them are horrendously deadly to life. And so the bioindicator species is like a canary in the coal mine. So when we're not paying attention to the salmon and the fact that the coho is endangered and the other salmon- and the other salmonids are suffering, we're not paying attention to the fact that we're also going to suffer. So that's that's why this is so important. This does not just affect fishermen, our economy. It doesn't just affect, you know, the people that are in the fields. This is a widespread concern. And I could go into more of the solutions part, which is what I wanted to do. But if you won't allow me to, I can't make you. But could I at least tell you about wine really quick?
That's like five minutes of public comment. I'm sorry.
Okay.
We have others. It looks like there's others, but thank you.
There are a few other people that have something to say. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Andrea Spawn and I'm with Crescent City Fishing Group. And I just wanted to give you a quick update on the quill back situation. The good news is the stock assessment results are in. And just a reminder, a fish is considered to be overfished if it is at 25%. NOAA has determined that we are at 46%, meaning we are not even close to being overfished, just like we complained about, you know, all last year. This still does have to be finalized by the Star Committee, who's meeting this week, and then the PFMC Council meeting in September. It's not going to mean we can catch quill back, but we will not get closed down over them. I just want to say none of this would have happened if we hadn't had support by the community of Crescent City. PFMC, NOAA, GAAP, GMT, all those people that have all their meetings down there have been shocked and surprised at the support and the voices that were heard from all of us up here, especially our government officials. Chris Howard, we have got him down to a lot of the meetings and he has made a huge difference. I wanted to let you know and thank you very much for sending him. It has helped immensely. They constantly tell us that they're shocked that Crescent City got so involved with PFMC and to fight for our fishing rights. One thing is that this is not done and we have to stay on top of it. Next year, they're going to do a stock assessment on the canary. And the canary up here are prolific. We fished the other day and caught nothing but canaries, couldn't even get a black. And the blacks are prolific too. The other, so we have to stay on top of it all and we have been. Steven Huber and myself, we're getting surveys more and more. CCFRP is going to be up here in August. Steve went down with a CCFRP boat to Redding Rock. And they surveyed the MPA, discovered a lot of fish that they're thinking might not be around are definitely around. So we have to do, we do have to stay on top of watching them with the canary. The good thing is, here's another good point, is we might get our waters back from 20 fathoms to 30 fathoms or state waters. Now, I've heard this could happen right away. I've also heard it's got to go through the PFMC meeting in September. They have to approve it and we could get it back as early as 2026. So it's just going to depend on on them. But the other good news is, as I was talking to Chris, is that, two seconds, we don't have to go to the September meeting for the PFMC meeting. Tim Clausen has said, all the decisions are already done and we don't have to do it. So it's good. Thank you. I want to thank all of you guys for helping support us.
Thank you.
And thank you, Andrew, for leading the charge. We appreciate you as well.
Good morning. My name is Garen Scott. I just want to hear a comment about the Smith River. I don't know about you, but I like drinking clean water, right? Good water, right? And I like eating fish. So I'm concerned, you know, if any toxin to be dumped into that river, right? Going on that, so. I also understand too that probably the lily bowl growers have paid taxes to me. Fund your guys' seats up there. It's a win-win thing, you know, follow the dollar, see where it goes, you know? I don't know. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yeah, I want to make a comment, but I gotta shut up. Is that?
Okay. So if we don't have any other public comments, I'm going to close it. Okay, I'm closing public comment. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting until July 8th, right here.